On Wednesday, Jan. 23, this notice that this meeting was emailed to the Press and the Mainland Journal. Notice was also delivered that day today, Carver Township Clerk, and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall. Mrs. Bonjorino?
Here.
Mr. Del Barca?
Here.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Ms. Hyman?
Here.
Mr. Ireland?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mr. Seppi?
Here.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
And Mrs. Slough?
Here. Okay, can we salute the flag? And after we're done, we have a moment of silence from Mr. George Allen, who is a security guard here at Alder.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
Motion for the minutes?
Motion, Ireland.
Second.
Mr. Price?
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. Del Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Slough?
Yes. Okay, Dr. Gruccio.
Good evening, everyone. This is awesome. This really is. There's a whole room of kids in the other room. It's the best time of the year because we get to celebrate the most awesome things that happen in our school district. So bear with us. We have a lot of celebration tonight, and that's a wonderful thing. It's all positive, and I tell you all the time, 99% of what we do and what we're about is positive, good stuff. All right? So I present every month, for those of you who are new in the audience, and the presentations are based around our student learning goals, our district learning goals, and it keeps the board informed each month instead of waiting till the end of the year. So some of the great things that happened regarding student achievement, and this is news for the board, as you know, we've been going through the CUSAC process, and we sent in a waiver to the state for student achievement. I'm going in and out, and that waiver was approved. All right? So when we approve, when we proceed through our grading process, it looks like pretty much straight A's for us, but we'll get that final report to you. But we, the waiver was granted. Regarding student achievement and celebrations, we had our moving up ceremonies for our middle schools on last Friday, and that was a great celebration with a whole eighth grade class from Alder and Fernwood. We presented their certificates for moving up from our middle schools to our great Ag Harbor Township High School. Middle schools also held their Junior National Honor Society presentations over the last month. We had a geography fair at Miller. Our Fernwood choir took first place in Music in the Park, and our LGPA art contest was awarded to Dominic Ellingsworth and Savannah Francisco. All right? So that's good stuff from the LGPA. The Atlantic County Academic Recognition for our students from Fernwood, Alder, and the high school. If those students are here, can you please come on up? All right, so these students, along with the other students in the picture here, attended a luncheon with myself and the principals of the middle school and the high school, and they were honored and recognized for their academic achievements of being the top in their class. Right? So from Fernwood, we have Addison Lambert, Serenity Wu, and Anastasia Mittnick. Addison, I know you're here this evening. Addison, here's your certificate of academic excellence, and we are very proud of you, and best of luck in your journey to go to Ag Harbor Township High School. Congratulations. All right, from Fernwood, we have Priscilla Bediako, Kaitlin Wiggins, and Destiny Abreu. Priscilla, congratulations. We appreciate your efforts and your hard work, and you're off to a good start and good luck at Ag Harbor Township High School. And we have Destiny Abreu. Congratulations. Good job, hard work, going to the high school. And Sawyer Dills can tell you all about what it takes from your hard work and his performance at the high school this year. Give me with these. Sawyer received a certificate of academic excellence, and we're going to hear it from him tomorrow night as he speaks to all of us as the salutorium of the graduating class of 2023. All right, that is student achievement at its finest. Moving on to climate and culture. Flag Day activities celebrated in our schools, also Juneteenth activities where we're educating our students, all right, about the day. The poems, through speeches, trivia games, karaoke songs, and it brought unity and cultural awareness to our schools and our students, also appreciation and fun at the same time. We had Title One Family Night that was held on May 22. Field trips have occurred, field days, end of the year barbecues and celebrations and pep rallies. The kids, if you walk through our schools, the schools were excited. Excitement going on. Kids were having a great time, smiles on faces of students and teachers, and it was a very, very great thing to see for me. Retirement parties going on here and there and everywhere, and we have our retirees here tonight that we're going to honor. We met with our special education parents and our Title One parents in a meeting just recently, got a lot of feedback. Feedback's important because feedback allows us to get better at what we do. Feedback allows us to embrace, and we provide those relevant experiences for our parents and our students. So very, very productive meetings, and we look forward to having more. Also, we held our firearm safety night for our parents, where our Director of Security, in combination with the Ag Harbor Township Police Department, provided information on the importance of keeping firearms safe. Also, under climate and culture, we celebrated our Teachers of the Year. We had the ceremony here at the board level, but the county recognizes our teachers and our paraprofessionals and Educational Services Professionals of the Year. So that was held this month also. So I know Dr. Charlton attended that luncheon. You see him up there in that picture. As far as community partnerships, we continue to recognize Atlantic Care. They've been very, very good with us. They work with us with our Healthy Schools Specialists and provide us resources each and every day for our students. Books-A-Million has donated again books to our school district, so it's great. Our students will have the opportunity to have new reading resources. And of course, our Ag Harbor Township Police Department, working with them on some recent incidents, EHT Emergency Management. These folks will be here tomorrow night for graduation to assist us. Speaking of graduation, Project Graduation, and our friends and supporters that put on this great, great program for our students after graduation. They are need in for volunteers. So it's a great night, particularly if you have students in the district. Get involved, get involved early so you can be a part of how they prepare, they raise money, and they do it for the kids. So we'll all be there. It's a late night, but it's a fun night, and it's worth it because it's keeping our kids safe. Also, a little plug here for our EHT Festival. This is the last board meeting, you know, for the school year, but come back in September, on September 30th. I do want you to mark it on your calendar because I want to see all of you there. All right? Food trucks, athletic events, games, clubs, crafters, and more. It's time for us as a community to be together, see what our kids are doing, and get to know each other. Okay? All right, so with that said, it's time to celebrate. So who's going to help me? There you go, my assistant. First team, right?
Yep.
Okay, we're going to bring the teams in, and I'd love for them to stay. I think what we're going to do is we'll have them come through, and they can make their way out the door there. Okay? In the meantime, while we're staging, I'll share with you the superintendent's report in video style so you can get a bird's eye view of what happened over the last month here in the district.
(Music)
And we have Destiny Abreu. Congratulations. Good job, hard work, going to the high school. And Sawyer Dills can tell you all about what it takes from your hard work and his performance at the high school this year. Give me with these. Sawyer received a certificate of academic excellence, and we're going to hear it from him tomorrow night as he speaks to all of us as the salutorium of the graduating class of 2023. All right, that is student achievement at its finest. Moving on to climate and culture. Flag Day activities celebrated in our schools, also Juneteenth activities where we're educating our students, all right, about the day. The poems, through speeches, trivia games, karaoke songs, and it brought unity and cultural awareness to our schools and our students, also appreciation and fun at the same time. We had Title One Family Night that was held on May 22. Field trips have occurred, field days, end of the year barbecues and celebrations and pep rallies. The kids, if you walk through our schools, the schools were excited. Excitement going on. Kids were having a great time, smiles on faces of students and teachers, and it was a very, very great thing to see for me. Retirement parties going on here and there and everywhere, and we have our retirees here tonight that we're going to honor. We met with our special education parents and our Title One parents in a meeting just recently, got a lot of feedback. Feedback's important because feedback allows us to get better at what we do. Feedback allows us to embrace, and we provide those relevant experiences for our parents and our students. So very, very productive meetings, and we look forward to having more. Also, we held our firearm safety night for our parents, where our Director of Security, in combination with the Ag Harbor Township Police Department, provided information on the importance of keeping firearms safe. Also, under climate and culture, we celebrated our Teachers of the Year. We had the ceremony here at the board level, but the county recognizes our teachers and our paraprofessionals and Educational Services Professionals of the Year. So that was held this month also. So I know Dr. Charlton attended that luncheon. You see him up there in that picture. As far as community partnerships, we continue to recognize Atlantic Care. They've been very, very good with us. They work with us with our Healthy Schools Specialists and provide us resources each and every day for our students. Books-A-Million has donated again books to our school district, so it's great. Our students will have the opportunity to have new reading resources. And of course, our Ag Harbor Township Police Department, working with them on some recent incidents, EHT Emergency Management. These folks will be here tomorrow night for graduation to assist us. Speaking of graduation, Project Graduation, and our friends and supporters that put on this great, great program for our students after graduation. They are need in for volunteers. So it's a great night, particularly if you have students in the district. Get involved, get involved early so you can be a part of how they prepare, they raise money, and they do it for the kids. So we'll all be there. It's a late night, but it's a fun night, and it's worth it because it's keeping our kids safe. Also, a little plug here for our EHT Festival. This is the last board meeting, you know, for the school year, but come back in September, on September 30th. I do want you to mark it on your calendar because I want to see all of you there. All right? Food trucks, athletic events, games, clubs, crafters, and more. It's time for us as a community to be together, see what our kids are doing, and get to know each other. Okay? All right, so with that said, it's time to celebrate. So who's going to help me? There you go, my assistant. First team, right?
Yep.
Okay, we're going to bring the teams in, and I'd love for them to stay. I think what we're going to do is we'll have them come through, and they can make their way out the door there. Okay? In the meantime, while we're staging, I'll share with you the superintendent's report in video style so you can get a bird's eye view of what happened over the last month here in the district.
(Music)
And we have Destiny Abreu. Congratulations. Ladies, congratulations. I appreciate the efforts that you put forth in representing Alder Middle School, and all your hard work paid off, and you're standing here as champions. We're very, very proud of you, and to the eighth graders, you're going to go into a great high school program, so keep that winning ways going. All right, thank you. Alder Girls Track and Field, also Atlantic Cape Junior High Division Champions. Undefeated season here. You got coached.
Yes, good evening. My name is Nicole Cheney, and this is Mr. RJ Romeo. He's our assistant coach. We are very fortunate to have a lot of help. We have our other volunteer coaches, Ms. Lauren Ritchie and Ms. Savannah Kissling, who volunteer their time to help us out. We could not do this without them, so thank you to them. The girls had an amazing season. We had a really large turnout. This is a very small part of our team. We have a huge team this year, and we were really excited to have our sixth graders be involved for the first time. So we had a wonderful season. Like Dr. Gruccio said, we were undefeated, and I'm very proud of everybody's hard work. So tonight, we're going to recognize those that were able to make it. Mr. Romeo, do you have anything to say?
Very proud of you guys, very proud.
So first up, we have our sixth graders that are here with us tonight, Julie Martinez, De La Cruz. Mia Michael. Abby Minshaw. Mackenzie Montavo. Laney Raymond. And Lila Stee. Some of our seventh graders that are here tonight, Nalani Carter. Riley Gorman. Marissa Major. Kayla White. And from our eighth graders, also the winner of our Sportsmanship Award this year, Tiana Habash. May Nemour. Our, this year's MVP for our team, Taylor Nemour. And Cassidy Stee.
Hey, so girls, I want to congratulate you on winning the championship and going undefeated. That means you won everything, right? So great job representing Alder Avenue Middle School, and I see great things in our future here. So keep on running. All right, good job. All right, I like that fist bump. All right. All right, ladies, good job. Moving on to our Alder Boys Track and Field. Also, Division Champions, Coach Zach Talhune and RJ Romeo.
Good evening, everyone. As you can see, we only have three boys here tonight, but you know, the whole team, we only have 31 kids, but we're very proud to have these guys here tonight, and yeah, I'll keep it short. Sorry. We have Ben Benjamin Giddings. And Steve Lawrence. And this is the second time we're going back-to-back champions in this league, and that's awesome. Thank you.
Gentlemen, I also want to congratulate you for the efforts that you put forth in representing Alder Middle School. To be very, very proud because we're all very, very proud of you. Thank you. Thank you, Coach. Appreciate it. Thank you, coaches. You're putting time in with the kids. Appreciate it. All right, Fernwood Baseball, Cape, or Atlantic Cape Junior High League Division Champions. Where's our Fernwood baseball? Oh, they're coming in another door? There they are. Yeah, they are. Baseball hat. Gives it away. All right, Coach Jim Tomps. What's about his guys here?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Coach Jim Tomps, and along with me is my assistant volunteer coach, Josh Skakowsky. I've had the pleasure to coach baseball in the district for the past 18 years. This year was no exception. Congratulations to the Fernwood baseball team who finished the season as Division Champs with a 7-1-1 record. After a rocky start that included a tie and a loss, the players worked hard and came together as a team, winning the next six games straight. Some highlights include a walk-off win against Ocean City with a final score of 2-1, a walk-off win against Galway with a final score of 4-3. Liam Shawncamp had the best batting average on the team with a 520. Dawson Ritchie had the most hits on the team with a total of 16. Nick Cruz had the most strikeouts as a pitcher with a total of 25. This year's Coaches Award went to Nick Cruz for his sportsmanship and leadership on, with the play, other players. The MIP Award, the Most Improved Player, went to Liam Shawncamp for his hard work in the offseason to become a standout catcher behind the plate. The MVP Award went to Dawson Ritchie for his excellent defensive play at shortstop, his great relief pitching, and his hot bat at the plate. I would like to thank the board for taking the time to recognize the success of our student athletes. I would also like to thank all the parents for the support throughout the season. Finally, I would like to thank my volunteer coach, Josh. The team sincerely appreciates all of his time and help. He has given up practices, games, and even umpire behind the plate. So now I'm going to call up the players and give them the certificates. All right, first we have Liam Shawncamp. Next, Dominic Salsto. Nathan Rosenberg. Kaden Rodriguez. Dawson Ritchie. Jay Spattersby. And Jake Lund. Once again, congratulations to the baseball team and all the outstanding athletes here tonight on their championship seasons.
Thank you. Gentlemen, I stand here very proud and very impressed with you sporting your EHT hats. So you have some passion about your team, and that's very important. That's all part of winning. All right? So congratulations on your achievements. You make us very, very proud, and coaches, thanks for spending time with the boys. Did some good work here. Thank you, and good luck in your next year, and also to those who, who's going to high school? Be so happy. All right, there you go. All right. Have a great summer, guys. So I'm going to let you explain this, but esports. Welcome to 2023. Little bit of different competition here. All right? So these folks are standing before you are champions in what they do, and it's in the field of gaming. All right? So Coach is going to tell you a little bit about it. Here you go, Brian.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you very much, Dr. Gruccio, and the board for having us here to celebrate the accomplishments of our team. Our esports team started four years ago during, like, when everybody was at home, and we played in one game, one type of game. We played a competitive league, just kind of had no idea what we were doing and got started. Over the past four years, our club has grown to over 40 students, and we compete at a state level in multiple games, different competitions throughout the entire year. This team are made up of seventh and eighth graders. These guys won the state championship for middle school for Super Smash Brothers this spring at Stockton University. Not only did they win, but they have not actually been beaten by another middle school team. So throughout the year, they've, they come and practice, they play, they work together. They talk about strategy, and we do a lot of different things that you might not associate with video games. And essentially, this group has not only taught us a whole lot, but has also accomplished so much off, outside of the game, beyond the game, that's made a big difference in our school. We also, he's not here tonight, but we also happen to have the state broadcaster now for esports, for Super Smash Brothers, for the entire state. He broadcasts all the state finals now. He's Willie Feliciano, and he's a Fernwood Middle School student, and he's going to take over as the announcer for Garden State Esports, which is the statewide organization, which has over 7,000 students participating in it. Again, these guys, unbeaten, unstoppable. They are an incredible force, not just in the game, but outside of it as well. I couldn't be more proud of them. And also, the work that my assistant coach, Mr. Lee, who's been volunteering with our team and done an incredible job this year, is really, it's really made all the difference. So I really appreciate everybody coming out and celebrating all the different teams we have that have had so much success, and I'm really excited that we get to be a part of it. Thank you.
I hold your belt.
It's nice. It's a nice belt. Over the shoulder, over the shoulder.
Oh, sorry.
There you go. Yes. And Brian Daniel Perez. The mic will come for this, but Brian was actually a, Brian, excuse for you to hold that a little longer. Brian is, was actually the first-ranked middle school player in the state of New Jersey this year for, for Super Smash Brothers. He's going to head to the high school with Jazz next year, and they're going to probably lead our high school team to four titles over the next couple of years. So keep your eye out for esports for the high school and Fernwood because we're going to be here a lot.
Congratulations, guys. This is very impressive. I can't say I've ever had, held a belt this thick and shiny. So thank you for all that you do and for representing Ag Harbor Township School District. So just so everybody knows, and I don't know if you folks know, but here's the exciting piece. So esports, up and coming, and it's catching on, and the high school is in the process, and I thank you Board of Education for your support of building an esports arena. So that'll be at our Ag Harbor Township High School. So when you get to the high school, you'll be in a nice arena. I'll make sure the colors are cool, and the computers are what you need so that you can compete and continue to make us proud. So thank you, and give us back. Congratulations. Thank you. All right, moving on to the high school. That's, our feeder programs, folks. Future looks great. Right, we have our high school girls softball team, and coached by Christie Troster, but Iniesta this evening is the assistant coach, and that's what good assistant coaches do, right? They step up when they're called upon, and we have And we have Mr. Ralph Karugno, who's going to say a few words about the team and present the certificates.
Thank you. First of all, we have a great bunch of girls. They did a fantastic job. The season didn't end like we wanted it to. Last year, we came in second in the States. We thought we were going to be able to match that and get better, but we did not. We had a record of twenty-three and two. Our conference was twelve and oh. We scored one hundred and ninety-one runs, but we only gave up fifty. We had Art Pitcher, Little Dollar, Madison Dollar had four hundred and eighty strikeouts. And Madison Biddle had a hundred hits for her career and she lost the year because of COVID, so that was really good. We had two girls made all South Jersey, Madison Biddle and Madison Dollar. We had two girls playing the Carpenters Cup. The Carpenters Cup is a conglomeration of your underclassmen, but it's played right next to the Phillies Stadium in the F D R Park. And it's players from all around, not only South Jersey, but Delaware and Pennsylvania. And it's a real showcase. We have, you probably had, I was here yesterday and they probably had about thirty-five, forty coaches there, college coaches looking at these girls playing. So it's a real thing. Sofi Spatako and Madison Dollar were picked to play in the Carpenters Cup, which is a real honor, underclassmen. So our last game, we lost in the state semifinals, right? And we didn't win South Jersey, but we probably played the worst game we played the entire year. We didn't make seven, we made seven errors in that game. And we were looking at it, we didn't make seven errors the entire year. So we picked that game to play our worst game. That's where it is. I want to introduce the girls and give them their certificates. Versus Anna Valentino, she played third base for us. Fantastic. She came up, she was a, came up really strong hitting. She did a fantastic job at third. Sonia Castro. The catcher, she's a great kid. She did everything we asked her and she was very happy to do that. Jordan Miller. Jordan's our second pitcher. You can't do it one and you have to have the two, you know, and give the other one a break. She did a great job. Ava Calio. I'm the outfield coach, so she and I spend a lot of time together. She did a great job. So Sofi Spatako, we don't, I didn't really know her last name until tonight. Because we've called her Taco the whole time because Spatako is too hard to pronounce. She played the Carpenters Cup. She was our right fielder. Laura Mack, she was our left fielder. She started out that way. We had an injury. She came in and really played really well at left field and did a great job. Mary Del Ray. She also played in the outfield. Her main job was running because in softball, you run for the catcher and the pitcher. She did a phenomenal job, was a great baserunner, very, very smart on the bases and a real good student of the game. I'm expecting a lot for her next year. Casey Bellardi, a freshman. Who started at second base the entire year, did well. She's what they call a slapper in softball. And she did a great job and we're expecting her maybe to go to shortstop next year. Rihanna the Mooch Pope. Rihanna was, she's also a freshman. She played, she was our DH. As we were DH for the pitcher because we don't want to lose her by getting hit by a opposing pitcher as we did in one game. She did really well and we're expecting her to play third base and take over Anna's spot. Marley Hudnall. Marley plays outfield and first base. We kind of flipped her to the outfield because we needed her there. Wasn't real comfortable at first, but she got really, really good at the end. Elizabeth Meyer, who's also E because we don't want to say Elizabeth all the time. She's our catcher. She does a great job, has a great arm, also can hit the ball very, very well. Sydney Matousin. She's our pitcher, also plays outfield. We're expecting her to throw a lot more next year than she did this year. And she's really got her confidence, was a little bit low in the beginning, but she really gained really well at the end. Caitlin Wazaria, a little speed demon. She was our base stealer, another runner. Again, we'd get somebody on base, the pitcher or the catcher, she would run for them. Whereas sometimes when somebody who wasn't as fast as Caitlin is, we would put her in and she would steal bases for us. Great job. And last but not least, Lucy Stinson, an outfielder. We're not kidding. We're expecting a lot from her next year. So she's going to be a big integral part of the team. Thanks, Lucy.
Thanks, Coach. Ladies, first of all, thank you for sporting your Ag Harper Township softball pride. Appreciate that. As a former coach, when you're looking like teammates, it's real important, all right? You girls know what it's like to win, right? And now you know what it's like to lose. And unfortunately, you had a rough game that day, but you know what? Everything happens for a reason and you learn from those lessons, right? So it's okay to fail sometimes, but it makes you stronger and it makes you look at what you need to do to get better next time. So appreciate it. I forgot to introduce this coach.
I always tell the girls that losing builds character, but I hate character. This is Abby Lord. She's a teacher at E H T, our freshman coach. And Dave Del Ray is our assistant coach. He's a volunteer, puts a tremendous amount of time in and it really helps the team. Sorry about that.
So congratulations, girls. We'll get them next year. Oh, more hardware. Ag Harper Township High School Boys Crew Team. Coach, 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 coach. Got to tell us all about these, this and the guys here, all right? Here we go.
Well, if you're new to rowing or you haven't heard of it, it's a bit of an obscure sport at E H T. But a lot of kids don't get started until they get at the high school. There are some middle school programs, but most of these guys got started in high school, freshman, sophomore year. They've been rowing in different events, getting themselves ready to row in the Varsity Eight. And Varsity Eight is the pinnacle of all the events in rowing. There's many different types of, rowing types of events, but the Varsity Eight's the best one, or most competitive, rather. And during the course of our season, we will travel to Philadelphia many times, the Cooper River in Camden. This year, we actually went out to Tennessee for the national championships. And you have to qualify for these events and that's what we did. We start training in the fall. You know, we come out a couple of days a week, just get everybody used to rowing again. And then in the winter, after winter break, we go six days a week. And we're pretty much a six-day-a-week program all the way through Memorial Day. So it's, as you can tell, a pretty big commitment. And these guys have worked extremely hard to get where we did this year. And where we got was we won the Cape Atlantic League, Varsity Eight. It's the second time E H T has done it in three years, so we're very proud of that. We were able to beat St. Augustine's, Holy Spirit, and Ocean City. And it was a very close race against St. Augustine's, but in the end, we were able to pull it out, which was always our goal. And then we were fortunate enough to go up to Philadelphia for the Philadelphia City Championships. And that's an event that is much bigger than the Cal. There's dozens of schools that go there. And again, Varsity Eight is the most demanding event. And this year, we were able to play second, which is really strong for a small team like E H T. So these boys have a lot to be proud of. They've worked extremely hard. They've had a great season. It's the best season E H T has ever had and we're looking forward to more from them in the future. So please give them a round of applause. Okay. This is Tyler Hines. He's our coxswain. He's the fellow that sits in the back of the boat, steers, does the on-water coaching. And he's a bit of a stickler at times. He's very demanding from the boys. He does a great job. Tyler's been in the Varsity Eight two years now and he's going to be going on to Penn State where he will be pursuing engineering. Ryan Manning is our stroke. He sets the pace for the team in the boat. Ryan is a junior, so he'll be back with us at E H T, pursuing his degree in rowing. James Garrow is the captain of our team. James is a two-year Varsity member, much like Brian is too and Tyler. James is on his way to Mercyhurst. He's going to keep rowing in college. We wish James the best. He's done a phenomenal job. We'd be very lucky to have him. This is our sixth man, Michael Wojhojitz. He's more of a swimmer maybe than he is a rower, but he's amphibious, obviously, right? So above the water or in the water, Mike's pretty good. And he did a great job for us this year. He's going to be taking himself to Monmouth University in the fall. Montclair? I'm sorry, Montclair. Chase Brown is the baby of the boat. He's a sophomore. Chase, very hard worker, did a great job. We really needed him and he will be back with us again next year. We have a big guy here, Cliff Deedlebaum. Cliff is a three-year rower. He's headed to Stetson University down in Florida and he'll continue rowing down there. Another swimmer on our team, Alex Smolewski. Alex is going to NJIT and he's going to get into computer science. Alex is a pretty interesting guy. I'm glad I got the chance to know him this year. Alex just started rowing last year and he's come a long way really quick and did a phenomenal job, so. Andrew Solano, another two-year rower. He just started last year. Andrew did a great job. He came out in the fall, former swimmer. Gave it up a little sooner than these other guys, but came out and rode, which is where we needed him. Did a great job. Andrew is going to be heading to Suffolk University up in Boston and we look forward to seeing more of Andrew, so. This is the guy that crosses the finish line first, Artan Januzi. Art is a three-year rower. He's a junior. He'll be back with us next year. And again, just, we're proud of all these guys. This is my assistant coach, Mike Kent. Mike and I work hand in hand. He's a huge help to me and he is a big reason why we were able to have success this year, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Coach. As you're talking, I'm like envisioning all these guys on the water. So you're in the front, right? And you're in the back. So all these guys are all in the boat and you have to row together to go that way? Good job. Very good. I'm impressed. So I don't know if you know about the history of crew in our school district, but it came to the Board of Education as a club and you rode your way to success and being champions. So we appreciate what you do and very, very proud of you. So thank you. Congratulations. Okay, Ag Harper Township Boys Track and Field, Cape Atlantic Champions, Atlantic County Champions. Here they come. It's Lucio and family. Come on out, girls. There you go, Coach. All right, first-year head coach, continuing the winning way. So tell us about it.
Thank you, Dr. Lucio. Thank you to the rest of our administration and the board. Everybody, thank you for having us. I'm going to be as quick as I can, but I do have a little bit to cover, so please bear with me here real quick. I'm going to start with my coaching staff. We accomplished a great many things this year in track and field. There's eighteen events. You could be running two miles, you could be throwing a javelin, you could be vaulting. And without this coaching staff, we would not be where we are today. And from my opinion, I think we have the best coaching staff in the state. As a ma would say, if you disagree, go argue with your grandma, but we do and I don't care what anybody says. To my left over here is Coach McLaughlin. He is our distance coach. I coached him when he was in high school. I now call him like my little brother. When I first, when he first started coaching, I'd say, you know, Coach McLaughlin was like a son to me. But this year, some of the kids on the team thought that he was actually older than me because it's a conversation I really enjoyed. So now I just call him like my little brother. Coach Phil, next to him, Coach Phil and Jerry from Fernwood. Coach Phil is our throws coach. He gets here to the high school from Fernwood as quick as he can contractually. His day ends at Fernwood. He doesn't put his feet up. He doesn't take a breath. He comes right over as quick as he can and coaches. I'm going to tell you everything you need to know about Coach Phil in one quick story. For the state meet, it got moved a day, all the way up in Franklin, two hours away. Instead of taking the bus, with gas prices at three dollars and fifty cents a gallon, Coach Phil drove up to the bus so he can get back in time to chaperone the eighth-grade Fernwood dance. Now that is some dedication. I have Coach Bell here. He is a volunteer coach. Yes, the most successful basketball coach in school history, volunteers on the staff. The day after, not to bring up a sore subject, Coach, but the day after the state finals, was it March second, third, whatever it was? March fifth? You don't have to give me the time, but the game ended. The next day, he called me, goes, what do you need? What can we do? What do you need for the track team? That's the kind of man he is. And my last volunteer coach who couldn't be here tonight, Coach Stetser, same thing. Head football coach, puts all his time into that. He gets relieved of his football coaching duties. He doesn't have sour grapes. He doesn't go home at two fifteen every day. He calls me that night and says, Coach, I got more time for track. What do you need? And I wouldn't be here, this team wouldn't be here without this coaching staff, so please give them a round of applause. These young men had an incredible season. We went undefeated in the Cal. We haven't lost a Cal meet since 2015, seventy-plus wins in a row. We won the county meet. We haven't lost a county meet since 2014, eight years in a row. Our success is, you know, been unmeasured in South Jersey. When we got to the championship season, we dealt with some challenges. Now, in order to get through those challenges, I kept harping this phrase onto the kids. And I learned this coaching basketball for two seasons with Coach Bell. And I know what some of you might be thinking, what does the five-eight Italian guy from Staten Island know about basketball? The answer is nothing. Coach Bell asked me on his staff for two years. I did it. And we watched the video where this college coach harped on something called petty problems. Don't focus on petty problems. Don't focus on things you can't control. Focus on the things you can control and win. You got a bad refereeing crew, bad for the other team, good for us. He's that talented, but he's an even better kid. It was a pleasure to coach him these four years. At the state meet, he won the long jump with a jump of 24 feet. He went on to the national meet to do even better, jumped 24 feet, 4 inches, got All-American. He has the longest long jump in county history and Cal history. Atlanta County has existed since 1836, so that's a pretty long time. He's going next year, secret's out, he's going to Penn State University to continue his, you know, track career. Okay, up next, Ryan Taylor. Ryan Taylor. Ryan Taylor has been a distance runner since 7th grade. He did cross-country, winter and spring track four years in a row. That's 12 seasons of distance running. Eighty, ninety practices a season. You're talking literally 1,000 practices where he came and he ran, did nothing else. That's why he's one of the best two-milers in school history. That's Ryan Taylor. Next, we have Eugene Allen. Where you at, Eugene? We got Eugene out of the team this year. He scored at the county meet in the shot put, really his first year doing track. He's kind of a small kid. I don't really know how we got him to go to the shot put that far, you know? Christopher Griffin over here is our javelin and distance thrower. Chris qualified for the meet of champions in two events, a very difficult thing to do in two of the most challenging events there are technique-wise. Sean Dever, we grabbed him off the wrestling mat. Here's a state-level javelin thrower for us, Mike Simeon. Angriest shot putter in state history. If you don't follow our social media, do yourself a favor tonight, EHT Track and Field. Watch the video of him throwing the shot put in nationals. It's the coolest thing you'll ever see. William Seaman, freshman, came to us from the swimming team, did a great job in our distance group this year. We have Jordan Sanchez, 400 runner from the basketball team. Amir Halim, 800 miler. Amir thinks he has better hair than the head coach, but he doesn't. Ari Bell, Coach Bell's son, freshman hurdler. Chase Mazer.
He's at Boise State this week.
Yeah, take Chase's certificate here, talk about dedication, Chase is a, yeah. Chase is a great runner, but he's not as fast as his dad yet. Matthew McDevitt, a freshman, another great distance runner. I'm going to spend a second on Christopher Mantow, who was the fastest South Jersey runner at the meet of champions. Christopher's a soccer player. He is a sprinter turned distance runner. The kids on the team call him the Terminator. It's not really hard to figure out why, he just runs like a killer. There's no two ways about it. How are you doing, Coach? Alright, we have certificates for the rest of the guys. I don't want to hold anybody up. We have also Danny Gonzalez, one of our sophomore hurdlers. Aaron Wagner, sophomore distance runner. And Chris Mitchell, sophomore distance runner. We have their certificates right at the pile. Again, thank you everybody so much. Girls, do you have anything else to add?
Go Eagles!
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Dr. Lucio, for having us.
Thank you, Coach. Thank you, girls. Love that EHT pride. Gentlemen, thank you for your efforts. We're very, very proud of you. Keep the winning tradition going. I know you will continue to do so. I know it's tough sometimes out in the spring sports with the weather, the wind, the rain, the heat, but you held your heads high, you ran really fast from what I hear, threw far, jumped far and high and all for Egg Harbor Township Play School, so, great job. Congratulations. Congratulations, guys. Good job.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you, Coach. Thank you, really. Appreciate it. Alright, we have certificates for the rest of the guys. I don't want to hold anybody up. We have also Danny Gonzalez, one of our sophomore hurdlers. Aaron Wagner, sophomore distance runner. And Chris Mitchell, sophomore distance runner. We have their certificates right at the pile. Again, thank you everybody so much. Girls, do you have anything else to add?
Go Eagles!
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Dr. Lucio, for having us.
Thank you, Coach. Thank you, girls. Love that EHT pride. Gentlemen, thank you for your efforts. We're very, very proud of you. Keep the winning tradition going. I know you will continue to do so. I know it's tough sometimes out in the spring sports with the weather, the wind, the rain, the heat, but you held your heads high, you ran really fast from what I hear, threw far, jumped far and high and all for Egg Harbor Township Play School, so, great job. Congratulations. Congratulations, guys. Good job.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Congratulations. Nice job.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you, Coach. Thank you, really. Appreciate it. Alright, we have one more team, in case you haven't figured out alphabetical order. We have our boys volleyball team. Cape Atlantic League Champions. This is a newly formed team for our school district, for our high school and they've done a lot of work and already have their name in the Cape Atlantic League history book. So, here you go, Coach Christian Wiesch.
Thank you, Dr. Lucio. So, yes, so this is the boys volleyball program's third year in existence and many of the seniors here started off as sophomores and kind of built the program and I want to definitely give a shout out to Mr. Rutledge for promoting our mission to schedule as many tough competition games as we can to kind of get to this point. And so, this year was sort of a culmination of the seniors' hard work to get to this point. They are, they were 13-1 this year in the Cape Atlantic League. They are 26-2 over the past three years in their existence. We have a couple of the young men here with record, our record boards. All of the red names are records, names of these young gentlemen who have set, broken, added themselves to the record books, so, pretty neat, kind of, you know, tribute to them. I will announce a few of the record keepers here as we pass out the certificates, but I guess that's all I would like to say. I do want to acknowledge my JV coach, Mr. Rick Martin. The JV team was 22-0, perfect season this year. And we started a freshman program this year for the first time and the freshman team outstandingly was 12-1. So, just a lot of success. Kudos to the young men. They've been playing all, you know, all year round. They're over at Canale Park playing. If you drive past the tennis courts, you'll see them in the back playing. It's our goal, hopefully, to add even more courts as the sport grows. We have girls volleyball in the fall. McKenna, one of our managers, is one of those athletes and then boys is in the spring. So, without further ado, McKenna Weber. Alexander Adair. Alex is one of our record holders. He has the career digs, most digs in school history. What's up, Alec Barnes? Alec Barnes is also one of our record holders. He was first-team Cape Atlantic League All-Star this year. He has most kills in school history. That's like a spike for us non-volleyball people, I guess, keeping it PG, right? And blocks, so he's kind of our big guy and, like I said, Cape Atlantic League, first-team All-Star. And Joshua Borushkin. Min Huang. Came out to our senior night. Min also played the national anthem on the violin, so, multi-talented. Cassif Khan.
And Cassif.
Clinton Lee. Kevin Lee. Also, if you've seen any of our matches, Kevin always wears the opposite color. There's one position called a libero who gets special subbing rights. So, if you ever were watching volleyball and you're like, "Why is that guy wearing the wrong shirt?", that's on purpose. So, Kevin, Kevin got that honor this year. Next, Tree Lou. Michael Nemore, our captain. Michael is also one of the Cape Atlantic League All-Stars, first-team All-Stars. Michael has the career sets record and it's well over 600, is that right, Michael? So, that's a lot of spikes.
A lot of spikes.
And Michael was the guy setting it up for everybody. Sterling Schmidt. Khalil Tanver. Christian Wieschinrat. Christian is also on our records. He's kind of number two behind Alec Barnes. He's only a junior, so I'm sorry, Alec, but, you know, those records probably won't stay too long. Christian was honorable mention, Cape Atlantic League All-Star. And then, last but not least, I want to acknowledge Mo and Joe, a couple of our junior varsity players. And then, of course, Coach Richard Martin. We have a special presentation. We'd like to give Dr. Lucio some EHT volleyball magnets to put around the school or wherever you show our EHT pride on that. And again, the EHT Boys Varsity Volleyball Team.
Thank you, Coach. I love EHT swag, so, send it my way, so. Appreciate the efforts for having, being a new program to our high school. You know, we heard you, right? You spoke out, you signed those petitions, we embraced you and we've engaged you in a program. So, I appreciate your efforts and stand there proud because, you know, three years, you're champions and I know you continue to do well. So, congratulations and thank you for your efforts. Appreciate it, guys.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Records. Coach, thanks. Okay, well, that concludes the recognition of our athletes and some of our academic students in the district. For 7,400 students that attend our district, it feels so great to stand there tonight and recognize students because that's why we're here each and every day. Teachers and administration, we're here because we're passionate about our students. I just want to share, probably about 15 years ago, I stood in this room as a new assistant superintendent and listened to a line of community members that came up to the mic and expressed their concerns. What's up with our high school? What's up with our middle schools? How come our teams don't do well? And we were concerned. Well, what's it take? It takes feeder programs, it takes coaches that are versed in the sport, that are passionate. It takes time that you spend with athletes to explain to them what it takes to work hard, you know, to sweat a little bit, to have pride. So, there's all different kinds of things. You might be able to run as fast as, or faster than someone else, but if you're not part of a team, if you're not embraced by a coach who loves you, by a school who has pride, an athletic department who takes it serious and says, "You know what?", and a Board of Education as well who supports and says, "You know what? Facilities need to be upgraded so they can run faster and they can play faster and they can be supported, whether it's in the pool, on the courts, on the fields, the support of education, you know, support it, putting a turf field in the high school, an all-purpose field." So, a lot has gone on in the last 15 years and I stand here so proud and I'm sure the Board of Education as well and the parents, it turned out tonight, champions after champion after champion, after championship team. And there's teams out there that came in second and came in third, but they're all out there to represent Egg Harbor Township School District and, you know, I cannot express how proud I am of the students and the coaches and the teachers that put the time in to develop these programs, to develop these athletes. And some of them are getting back next year and that's great and some of them are so proud to send on to colleges as they expand and brag and showcase their roots of Egg Harbor Township. So, that's all about you, parents too, and teachers who are sitting out there who have supported these students and raised these students. So, thank you. Give yourselves a hand. Alright, now, we have some departing folks here who have done a great job sitting with us at our board members and, come on up, Mrs. Salagi, come on down as president and you want to, come on up. So, our student reps to the Board of Education, they were chosen by their classmates to sit here and represent Egg Harbor Township High School and also the students of the school district. I think they learned a lot about volunteerism and serving a public entity. You know, they've learned a lot from their fellow board members. They are considered as board members and they learned about serving their community, serving their school. And I don't know if you want to say what else you learned, but we have Camelia Alfaro. She's, gets an award for greatest appreciation and dedicated to the services of the children and schools of Egg Harbor Township. Tomorrow night at graduation, Mrs. Salagi will be recognizing them if everything goes well. We are anticipating some rain, so we might have to go with a flexible plan, but Camelia, thank you for your service.
You're right. Do you want to say something? Thank you. It was nice.
Alright, and Samir Eldur, student rep to the Board of Ed and we appreciate your service.
Want to say something? And then pass it over. Thank you so much. It was a great year. It was wonderful to see like all the behind the scenes behind like the school district and everything that entails because it is a lot of work. So, it was like great exposure and I'm really grateful for it. Thank you.
Really excited for tomorrow night, right?
Yeah, hopefully. Hopefully it won't rain.
We appreciate the time that you spent with us and we hope that you learned how we function, how the schools function. I'm sure it was a new experience for you, so we were happy to have you.
We're going to pass the torch to Kyle Tran and Kiara Davis. Are you here this evening? Come on up. Alright, so, starting in September, Kiara's going to be here with us and you'll be seated there. You get your own little name tag and you'll serve your school. You'll be meeting with your high school principal, right? Gathering information and sharing information with her from the students, right? So, congratulations. So, let's have a hug here. Alright, here we go. So, if there's any parents and students that have been recognized and would like to leave and they probably have to study for a big test tomorrow, it is the last day of school, you are welcome to do so. If not, we're going to continue with our recognition and that will be the folks who are retiring from the Egg Harbor Township School District. And they've been a big part of the success that you see here in terms of recognition in our students, but it's time. They've decided that their dedication and devotion to the school district is up, right, guys and girls? Alright, so, I need some help, my assistants. And I think, Barbie, you want to stay down here as well? So, we have flowers and plaques and a few things to say about these great people who have served our school district and served our students and we'd like to show our appreciation for them. Alright, so, we're going to begin with Lori Blake. Come on up. Lori has 22 years of service in education and possesses the unique ability to make complex concepts accessible and engaging and captivate her students with her infectious enthusiasm for chemistry. Thank you for having enthusiasm for chemistry. No, I'm not done. I don't understand chemistry, so I thank you very much. Her classroom was a place of discovery. enthusiasm for chemistry. Thank you for having enthusiasm for chemistry. No, I'm not done. I don't understand chemistry, so I thank you very much. Her classroom was a place of discovery where the wonders of chemistry came alive. And Rodney tells us, Rodney, her supervisor, tells us that countless eureka moments were witnessed under your expert guidance. Beyond her teaching skills, she demonstrates genuine care and compassion for her students, and her nurturing approach fostered a supportive environment where everyone felt valued and encouraged to reach their full potential. So Lori, congratulations. The best to you and your future endeavors. We thank you for your service. I had the pleasure of being high school principal when Lori was in our science department. And she can continue to do so and serve our kids, and appreciate it. Had a great time, but I know you're looking forward to what's next for you. All right, Mr. Joseph Del. 34 years! 35, sorry. 35 years. Got to correct me. 35 years, definitely an EHT icon, a staple of the high school CTE department. He's taught many different courses in the department, CAD and wood, and most recently, PC systems and networking. He promotes the computer science field, and he has prepared many students to launch successful careers in computer sciences and technology. Joe also served as a wrestling coach for many years at EHT. So definitely an icon. I know you were there before I got there, and you're still there until tomorrow. Congratulations, Joe. All right, another Joe in the department, Joe Mandillo. 18 years, Joe? All right, 25 altogether, 18 in EHT. Started off at the middle school, left the middle school to go to the high school, industrial tech department. He's taught wood and photography, and has spent recent years teaching students the ins and outs of the Adobe Photoshop program. He's an avid guitar player. I didn't know that. Awesome. And educated students both in and out of the classroom with guitar lessons. Are you going to continue to teach guitar? All right, good job. All right. So Joe, thank you for your service. Always learn something new about everybody. Mr. Berman here. All right, we have an administrator in the mix here, Ms. Mary Ann Giordino. 34 years in the business? 34 years in the business. Mary Ann was hired in Egg Harbor Township at the age of 21 years old. And she began the job at the Davenport School as a sixth-grade teacher. She's moved to the intermediate school, to Swift School, as a cooperating learning facilitator. She's been, she served Alder as a special education teacher, Davenport Complex as a teacher, then moved over to Slaywell Complex as an assistant principal, and then moved to Davenport as principal, and finally at Alder Avenue Middle School as principal. So she knows a lot about our schools. Mary's very compassionate about what she does. And when I asked for her memories, and I just want to go over some of them because some of you are in the room right now, she really appreciated the candor and charm of Don Robertson, the heart laugh in people connections of Mr. Lou Delabarka, the grit, toughness, and humor and love of Dennis Byrd, and the stories and charm and acceptable glint of an eye in Tom Beck. So she appreciates very much the people she worked with. Her favorite thing about EHT is walking down the halls in the morning and at dismissal, talking to students and teachers and laughing with them. And it's the energy that moved her each and every day to smile and have their passion in what she does. She appreciates the relationships with her students and her parents, and she's looking for exploring different places and new interests as she travels and seeks a job in writing, teaching, consulting, leadership, but in business or at the college level. So she's got to figure out, Mary, but I know you're up to something, all right? Yeah, it's okay. You've got plenty of time. All right, congratulations and thank you for your service. Mr. Norman Ruff, come on up here. I miss you, Norm. 16 years as a custodian, a lead custodian at Alder Avenue Middle School. This man right here, all about passion, being friendly, and he's funny. We had some good times, some phone calls on snowy days. He's a great communicator, hard worker. Something you may not know about Norm, but before we had an official mascot in the district, I had Teacher of the Year one year, and I asked him to be the eagle, and he put the costume on, and I think he almost had a medical issue because you were sweating, 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 sweating. But I appreciate the efforts. He also served as Santa with pizza with Santa and the Easter bunny. So he has many, many different roles he's taken on here in the school district, and we appreciate that. Saturday, Sunday, morning, noon, and night, he was about Alder Avenue. He protected his building. He had a vested interest in it. The people he worked with loved him, and he always prepared this board meeting for a board meeting. It's where everything was set. The same thing for administrators' meetings. So Norm, I can't thank you enough. I hope you're having fun, and I hope your garden's going well, and your farm's going well. And he's saying he's having a good time. That's what it's all about, right? All right, so I appreciate you, Norm. Debbie Dro Trexler, dedicated bus driver for over 25 years. It's six years now. All right, always greeting the students with a smile, getting the students safe to school. Back home, and I always tell the bus drivers, to be able to drive a bus, a big rig like that, with your back to 54 students, it's a craft. It's an art. And she's seen everything, all right? Inside the bus and outside of the bus. All right, so we appreciate your services out there on the roads. I know it's a tough job, but we appreciate what you do, and our parents appreciate what you do, getting those kids to school safe. She got to drive? Does she drive you too? Because you went to EHT, I know. Are you going to come back to substitute? All right, you don't have to. Give her some time. Tomorrow's the last day, right? Oh, that's it? I need you tomorrow. Yeah, thank you. Mrs. Tudhill. Well, we've got a fan club here. Stephanie Tudhill, 31 years, Egg Harbor Township High School graduate, also Egg Harbor Township High School cross-country runner, and she's in the Hall of Fame from 1984 to 85. Stephanie, as you can see, is full of heart and passion. In addition to the standard curriculum requirements, she embraces the principal ideas of taking care of the earth. She's a leader in the green team at Davenport. She spearheads a student recycling collection, teaches students about plant life and composting. She demonstrates the meaning of embrace, engage, and educate through her peer, parent, and student interactions. The students shared that they will truly miss Stephanie. And we will, Stephanie. We thank you for your service. As you can see, your co-teachers or your teachers are here. You know, you were filled with fun as you led those holiday parties, the reading novels with your students, but most of all, listening to your students and providing them with needs. Her favorite, most thing of Egg Harbor Township is watching her students grow from young second and third graders to becoming adults. And that's what it's about. So thank you, Stephanie, for your service. We appreciate you. Don't forget any retirees that showed up and did an RSP. Who else? Who do I have? No, 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 how come I don't have it? All right. Okay, I have her. No, I do. Maria Fiola, come on up, 25 years. Oh, wow, Lou, you know her too? All right, here we go. Maria has been working at Davenport for the past 25 years. She began in first grade for three years and then looped into second grade. She's been a second-grade teacher for the past 22 years here. Her favorite memory of Davenport is when she dressed up as her principal, Lou Delabarka. And I said she sprayed her hair white, she wore glasses, with a Hawaiian shirt and black pants, it was so much fun being Lou for the day. And she also remembered jumping out of a cardboard cake for his birthday. Read in here. But she wore a beach cover up with a female body wearing bikini. I can't read it. Maria, congratulations. I wish I could have witnessed some of that stuff. Sounds like a whole lot of fun. Continue to have fun in your journeys beyond Egg Harbor Township, and we appreciate it. And it sounds like everybody's going to miss this, right? Hey, that's it, right? Okay, Ms. Kathy Wasen, 34 years. 37. Corrected me as she usually does. Anyway. Kathy started her teaching career in Absekin. And here's a fun fact, she taught Lisa Suie and Mary Ann Giordino were there, and they are retiring this year as well. So another interesting fact is that Kathy's been a part of the teacher union strike in Absekin, which was their first one and her first one. So she got a little taste for being a union member, and she came over to EHT as she substituted in EHT, and then she was hired at the Davenport School by Mr. Lou Delabarka. Lou was her principal. And then she was teaching in Steelmanville. Is that correct? And she even writes here that she never heard of Steelmanville, but she was stationed there to teach. And then she was asked to teach with the younger kids, right? And you tell me that you were a little scared about that because you're used to teaching older kids. So Kathy then becomes a longtime kindergarten teacher, remedial teacher, and learned to love those little ones. And she's got some little ones of her own that she's loving right now. Besides teaching, she became involved in the union, and that's EHT EA, and she was vice president, she was secretary, vice president, lead rep, and as we know, president for a very, very long time. Along the way, she served on committees, especially the negotiations committee. You know that, right, the board? And she worked her way up to be the chief negotiator. And chief, she is, and she was. You know, strong, and we've had these conversations, I can share it. We talk about strong women leadership. Kathy and I have had many, many conversations. We've compared our positions as, you know, being responsible for listening to a whole lot of people, right? And there's a whole lot of stuff that comes at us, but, you know, we know how to delegate, we know how to listen, we know we have to do to embrace our folks. Kathy has taught at Davenport, Steelmanville, Swift, Slaywell Elementary, and Slaywell Primary Schools. Her name still stands. Is this what you're telling me here? Your name still stands in the Steelmanville School, which is owned by someone who lives in it, right? And they still have her name above one of the doors, so. So Kathy is proud of teaching the children of Egg Harbor Township and representing her EHT EA as well. She's worked with wonderful colleagues, and the pandemic has made all of us aware of people's needs and emotions, and Kathy did a great job working with her staff as well as working with administration during that time. And she's looking forward to spending time with her family and her grandchildren, and I don't blame you. Her and I's had many conversations about grandchildren as well, and it changes it, right? It really does. But Kathy loves to sew, needlework, craft, garden, spend time with her friends, reading. She loves to read. I learned she loves tea. And she's looking forward to making a trip to England or Ireland over there, all right? Nice present, right? But no, Kathy, I appreciate all that you've done. I know that your staff does as well. It's been a joy working with you. And I said this at a, oh, by the way, we crashed her retirement party, and I didn't know how she was going to take it, but anyway, it worked out well. And, you know, I shared with Kathy that, you know, we didn't always agree, but we agreed to disagree, and we work things out. And when you work things out, it's all about the relationships that you have with people and how you communicate with people. Talk, talk. Things can be worked out. And that's what I appreciate about Kathy is that whether it was a phone call in the middle of August, or a phone call at night, phone call on the weekend, or she walked in my office and shut the door and said, "Sit down, Kim." We talked it out. We figured it out. So I'm going to miss that. But I wish you well, Kathy. It's, you know, well-deserved. I know it's tough leaving, but if you ever attended a retirement party, Kathy would always put a brick on the top of the podium, and she would give a golden brick to, you know, a member who's been in the district for a while. And she would always say, "The bricks are the building blocks, are the foundations of the district." This is an example of someone who is not only a brick, but a cinder block in my mind of this school district because she's been here this long, right? So Kathy, I'm going to get you a cinder block. A strong woman, strong woman. So, yeah, so I just wanted you to have that cinder block and always remember that you are part of the foundation of this school district. So I don't know if you want to say anything?
Pretty much said a lot of it. Thank you for being here for our students. You had my kids.
Yeah, I had your kids, yes.
Steelmanville, it was a different place. Thank you very much for your time here.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations. Thank you. Thank you for the education. Thank you. All righty, well, that concludes our recognition. And again, you know, EHT pride here, be proud of the people, of the students, of this school district because it is unlike any other, I will tell you. Sometimes, you know, we don't always appreciate what we have, but we got something going good here. So glad for all of you that are part of it. Going to miss those of you who are going to be leaving us, but you always know where home is, right? Come see us. You can substitute or be a guest speaker, whatever, but we are here for you, okay?
We're going to take a five-minute break.
Yes, thank you for reminding me. So for retirees and your guests, right through the door there, we have a little, some refreshments for you. And sometime, spend five minutes with the board members. They'd like to spend some time with you. All right, so five-minute break. Okay, we're going to proceed with our... Okay, we're gonna proceed with our board meeting this evening. Thank you for your patience. I'm not gonna apologize, because that was all good stuff. It was all good stuff. It's recognition for positive. What are you giving me here?
We're gonna do student reps.
Okay. All right. So like I said, it was recognition of all the great positive things that are going on in our school district. And again, I'll emphasize, you know, never take advantage of the good things that you have or the things that are going on, because it doesn't happen everywhere, anywhere. But it's happening here. So we're very, very proud. I thank the board for their support one more time.
Okay. Now, we're going to go to our student reps, and you can give us your final report.
Hello, everybody. I'm gonna try and keep it short today. So last week, freshman students of part of the Honors World Cultures Program at the high school participated in a Model UN, where they engaged in various arguments and discussions aimed at reaching an agreement on climate change policies. And students were exposed to situations geared towards building public speaking skills, teamwork, and analytical thinking. And it was such a huge success that it was even headlined on Six ABC, which was really impressive. On June 10th, the Fernwood Avenue Middle School Choir participated in the Music in the Parks competition hosted at Dorney Park. And their outstanding performance won the first place in their competing division, along with a superior rating by the judges. And this is the first time that the choir has earned a superior rating in over a decade now. So it draws emphasis on their hard work and dedication to being a part of the choir. And earlier this month, various Slayball Elementary classes spent the day at Slayball Teaching Gardens, where they learned about environmental sustainability and the importance of keeping our planet clean. The garden serves as a firsthand opportunity for students to delve deeper into the connection between nature, human actions, and the preservation of our environment by engaging in hands-on activities. So that's really great as well. And I'm gonna give it to Kimmy now.
Hi, everyone. So to begin, last month, myself, along with my fellow students, Keon Elliott and Ryan Elliott Kubey, faced off against teachers Mrs. Delaney, Mr. Lesser, and Mr. Bryant on Fox 29's Classroom Game Show. So we're looking forward to watching our episode, which is set to air in early July. Last Tuesday, the Multicultural Club of the high school hosted, we hosted our second annual multicultural day. Over 20 different cultures from around the world were recognized and represented through a multicultural fashion show, karaoke contest, games, activities, and a grand feast. The event allowed others to become informed about the various traditions from a wide array of cultures, spreading positivity and celebrating the diversity throughout EHT. And I really enjoyed putting that together. And it was an honor to be the Multicultural Club president for the past three years. So I'm glad to know that we left a mark on EHT. Next, in anticipation of graduation practices, Mr. Bell and his African-American Studies classes celebrated Juneteenth a few days early. The day began with an opening for Mr. Bell, followed by a moving performance of Lift Every Voice and Sing by two of his students. Students shared poems, enjoyed keynote speeches, and played trivia. And the courtyard was filled with traditional African-American games, food, and karaoke during lunchtime. It was a day of unity and cultural appreciation. And lastly, this past Friday, EHT Idol, which is also hosted by the Multicultural Club, it gained its 2023 grand champion in a final face-off between senior Janalysia Smith, junior Dallas Smith, and freshman Sophia Luongo. Sophia wowed the crowd. She has an absolutely amazing voice. And she racked up the most votes and won, as a freshman, the grand title of EHT Idol 2023 winner. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll see you guys tomorrow night. All right. Now we're gonna go to public comment. And then we're gonna go to personnel. Because you guys have been sitting here for a while. So while the board values and welcomes comments and opinions from residents, this meeting will now be open to the public, three minutes per person, on agenda items only. If your questions pertain to litigation, student, or personnel items, please see the superintendent after the meeting, as the board does not discuss these matters in public. Depending on the nature and the complexity of your questions, the board secretary may ask for your contact information, so that someone can get back to you with a response. As a reminder, this is a public meeting, and all comments should be made appropriate for a public setting in a respectful manner. So if you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your name and address. I don't see anybody moving, so... Okay. Then we will go to personnel. And Dr. Charlton, do you have anything to add?
I do not, Madam President, thank you.
Okay. So we need a motion for 10.2 through 10.8.
Motion.
Mr. Price, I'll make that motion.
Second, Ireland?
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Bonjourno?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Ms. Salagi?
Yes.
Okay. Then you told me I needed to add Section 12. Is that what you... Okay, where is that?
Section 13.
13, okay. So we need a motion on 13.1 through 13.2.
Motion.
Second, Sullivan.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bonjourno?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Ms. Salagi?
Yes. Dr. Grusio?
Okay, another, one of my favorite moments, and this is announcing to the public for the very first time, our new employees. Welcome and congratulations on earning a position here in the Agover Township School District. So I'll begin with Michael Alvo, who is a teacher at Fernwood. Jamie Hall, also a teacher at Fernwood. Larry Voe, teacher at the high school. I feel really old right now. Emma Seals, teacher, Agover Township High School Eagle Academy. Molly Dale, teacher at the Alder Avenue Middle School. Edward Cislak, reading specialist, Alder Avenue Middle School. Shafali Patel, teacher of Alder and Fernwood Middle Schools. Caitlin Cleaver, teacher at Agover Township High School. Brian Page, security coordinator for the Agover Township School District. Gabriel Gomez, Villalobos, custodian at Alder Avenue Middle School. Jeanette Padilla, building custodial specialist at the Alder Avenue Middle School. Okay, not new to the district, but new to positions in new buildings. Angie Charrow Hunt, high school assistant principal. John Mason, Alder Avenue Assistant Principal. And new to the school district, Mr. Thomas Biggins, high school assistant principal. And Mr. Adam Prime, high school assistant principal. Welcome, everyone. I think this evening, you got a good taste of what this great district is all about. And you are gonna be an integral part of joining our family. So with that said, go out and celebrate. You are dismissed, unless, of course, you want to stay for the rest of the meeting. But go out and celebrate. You sat here long enough.
Okay. Now we're gonna go to finance and operations. Yeah.
Student reps. Congratulations on your graduation tomorrow. You may be dismissed. It's time to re-fear your years here.
Okay, Mr. Smith, do you have any updates?
Yeah, so we had a couple of questions come in regarding items on finance. First, for the bills for payment regarding purchaser, the information was sent out as to what supplies were purchased under that fear for tactical public safety. And also, a question on the lead testing statement of assurance. We included a link to our website, so all the information is there. And if you kind of go to page three, because page one is the most recent and kind of work backwards, it shows the testing, all the results, and all the remediation. What we found, there were about five or so faucets and water fountains that were out of use. So when they were tested, most of those just came out of service. So those were really only issues. And we do that full-blown testing every three years. So in between the full-blown testing, we just do our statement of assurance saying that everything is still in compliance and that we're continuing to monitor all of our water outlets.
Okay. Mrs. Sullivan, wanna give your report?
Our meeting was on 6/13, 6:00 PM. The length of our meeting was record-breaking 30 minutes. Those in attendance were Mr. Ireland, Mr. Price, myself, Ms. Salagi, and our superintendent, Dr. Grusio. We also had Mr. Beck from Food Service. He came and gave us his report. Now, this is what we discussed. Transportation Department, Mr. Smith noted the district recently placed an order for nine new 54-passenger buses, which are included in the 2324 budget lease purchase payments. Food Service, Mr. Beck discussed the outcome of the New Jersey Department of Agricultural Review and noted the Food Service staff did an excellent job preparing for the review. Mr. Beck discussed breakfast and lunch prices, that they will remain the same for the upcoming school year, and noted that the district is working on a possible modification to the breakfast program for September. We're gonna have him as a guest at one of our meetings over the summer, so he can present his, what he'd like to do to the whole board. The Facilities Department, Mr. Smith noted the department is continuing to work on open projects and final punch lists and finalizing schedules for the summer projects that are gonna take place. Business Office, Mr. Smith noted the new budget year has been open, and July 1st purchase orders are being processed. He noted this is a very busy time for them. Believe me, I used to work there. 13,000 POs in a matter of no time. So I really have to commend the business office. He also noted that the business office is preparing for the year-end closeout. Mr. Smith reviewed several items on the agenda for approval, including the monthly reports, shared service agreements, professional service contracts, grant applications, bid renewals, and authorizations of awarding of construction contracts, and a practicum agreement. Also discussed were several annual board motions that will be on the agenda for approval. Our next meeting is, I'm not sure, on? August 15th. Will be on August 15th at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Okay, we need a motion for 8.2 to 8.41.
Motion.
Second, Ireland.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bonjourno?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
I'm gonna abstain on bills for payment, J984. Yes for everything else.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Ms. Salagi?
Yes.
Okay, curriculum.
Our meeting, we had our meeting on June 13th at 7:00 PM. The length of time wasn't 30, it was 40 minutes, so we're getting there. The board members attending with myself, Ms. Hyman, Ms. Barbara Salagi, and administrators attending with Ms. Moss. We reviewed professional development and field trips. Upcoming agenda items reviewed were expanding our effective school solutions, summer hours for professional development and curriculum development, and approval for an exchange student. Discussions around convocation, summer reading, and review of the Equity Data Subcommittee's survey was discussed, along with football communication to parents and students also occurred. The next time, our meeting is August 15th at 7:00 PM.
Okay. Ms. Moss, do you have anything to add?
I do not, thank you.
Okay. We need a motion for 9.2 to 9.4.
Mr. Price, I'll make that motion.
Second, Ireland?
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bonjourno?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Ms. Salagi?
Yes.
Okay, now we're gonna go to policy.
Okay, good evening. I'm gonna give the policy chair a report. So we met Tuesday, June 13th, and our length was 52 minutes long. Members that attended were myself, Mr. Ireland, Mr. Seppi, Mr. Lou Delabarka, Ms. Salagi. Administrators that attended were Dr. Grusio and Mr. West. Others were Ms. Amy Alco. Subjects that were discussed were Policy 4250, hours and days of work, Policy 5112, entrance age, Policy 5120, assignment of pupils, Policy 5111, eligibility of residents and non-resident students, Policy 8110, attendance areas, Policy 8140, pupil enrollments, Regulation 5200, attendance. And then we also developed a policy for dress and grooming for administration. The conclusions that were reached were the following. Policies were discussed and abolished by the committee, as they are duplicated in other policies. Policy 5112, entrance age, Policy 8110, attendance areas, and Policy 8140, pupil enrollments. Policy 4250, hours and days of work, was discussed and revised by the committee. The topic of security longevity was the main focus. Policy 4250 is up for one reading and awaiting board approval. Policy 5120, assignment of pupils, was discussed and revised by the committee. The committee discussed the proper enrollment of students in the school. Policy 5120 is up for one reading and awaiting board approval. Policy 5200, attendance was discussed and revised by the committee. The following topics were revised by the committee. State-required attendance recording, truancy, total of excused and unexcused absences, and denial of course credit. Regulation 5200 is up for two readings and awaiting board approval. Policy 5111, eligibility of residents and non-residents, was discussed and revised by the committee. The committee added pre-K verbiage, admission, transfers, appeals, or placement to the policy. Policy 5111 will be up for the first reading in July. Policy 1216, administrative dress code, was discussed and developed by the committee as a new policy. Policy 1216 is up for two readings and awarding board approval. Recommendations, we're just gonna keep talking about regulations on our website. Our next meeting is August 15th at 5:00. Discussion, possible topics is Policy 5230, late arrival and early dismissal, and Policy 5240, tardiness. Mr. West, did I mess up anything there?
Thank you, Mr. Ireland, good job.
Okay.
Discussion?
Not yet. I need a motion and a second first.
Mr. Price, I'll make that motion.
Delabarka, second.
Okay, discussion.
Yeah, on attendance policy, 5200, what has changed? What's new or what's not new? Could you elaborate on that a little bit more?
Yes, Mr. Price. The big change is our unexcused and excused absences being reduced from 35 to 20 for our students, where they would be held accountable for obviously not going over 20 days, and they can be held back.
Okay, so it's gonna be more strict. So that's gonna mean more attention will be needed in that area. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Roll call, please.
And as a reminder, if anybody has any questions, it's all in Google Docs, and it shows what the draft was prior, what the...
Everything went with...
All right. It's just on Google Docs. So if anybody ever has any questions, board members, the draft is up there. What were the changes, there were strike-throughs or anything like that? that, because this, this policy, this regulation was very, very long, and it was completely redone, so if anybody has any questions, it's in there, or give me a call.
Okay. Now, old business.
We have to take a roll call for policy.
Oh, sorry, rushing.
Mrs. Bonjourno?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Salagi?
Yes. Okay, old business, affirm HIB and DH determination, we need a motion.
I'll make that motion, Sullivan.
Second?
Second, Ireland.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bonjourno?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Salagi?
Yes. Okay, you have your reports and communications, the board calendar, the retreat that's scheduled for July, we're gonna cancel, because July is a very busy month for everybody, and I think, I think we're being nice to each other and getting along, so we'll forego that. And we have to go now to the public for public comment. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say, with the same rules applying? Nobody? Okay. Alright, Mr. Delabarka, do you have something for school boards?
I'll try to keep it brief. Mr. Ireland, Mr. Price, and myself participated in the New Jersey School Boards Association's County Leaders Meeting virtually last, what was it, Tuesday, Thursday, last Thursday evening, was a kind of an interesting meeting, I was there for the whole time, so if Mike or Patrick wanna chime in, if I'm done, please do. At that time, Dr. Purnell, the executive director, spoke, he made a point about the new, New Jersey School Boards Association connection, you've already received some message about it, details will be following in, at the workshop in October, but the new program, I believe it came from him, he designed it and established it, it's gonna be, given us more opportunities to know what's going on in our programs and in state, so I think it's a good opportunity, so you'll, you'll see a lot more information coming out in the near future. The president of school boards, Dr. Karen Cordelina, the new president, gave us a brief welcome and, and offered, you know, her availability to answer any questions and be available, and she, I think she's planning on trying to visit around the state, so hopefully we'll get to see her sometime in the new year. The person who actually handled the meeting is our new vice president for counties, Barry Fitzgerald, and of course, Ray Penny did a lot of discussion about future planning. One of the biggest changes that he had to say was our meetings next year will still be hybrid, basically the same format, but he wants to begin the virtual part of the meeting at 6:45 instead of 7 o'clock, in order to move the meetings along a little bit more, so I think that's the one new idea. Please, we, we as the county officers, will be meeting on July 13th with the, with nausea from the state, to plan and planning for next year's meetings. So, if you have any ideas, suggestions, please see myself, Patrick, or Michael, we have leadership here for the whole county, in our, in our district, and if you have any great ideas for our progress, we would like to hear them, so we can maybe bring some new ideas next year, I know the state has some good ideas that they're gonna bring forth, and I think Patrick and Mike, you heard some possible suggestions the other night, I don't know if you remember, or wanna share anything, but it was a good meeting, and unfortunately, I had family there for that night, so I left about after a half hour, so Patrick and Mike, we were glad that you were there. Thank you for the opportunity, Madam President, to speak.
Mr. Delabarka, you've hit it all, we're good to go.
I did it all, well, I tried.
Just a, just a comment on it, I think it's, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just want to comment. Yes, it's a great meeting, I'm happy to be part of the.
It was brand-new for you, Michael.
It was brand-new for me, I'm proud to be part of the executive committee now, and I think it's important that the Atlantic County School Boards Association works together with all the different districts, because this is how we give and take information, and exchange information, ideas, and dialogue, and learn different ways to improve the district, and it's, it's really an important thing. Not everybody realizes maybe what the County School Boards Association's about, but it's, it's, it's an important part of the, of the process, so.
And what you know, Michael, is, and Barbara Salagi knows this, because she received my notice, I'm sure, and Patrick realizes it, I, again, did share highlights of the meeting with all of the presidents of the school boards around the county, and, which I did for the past several years that I was president, and I seized the moment, since my term doesn't end till the end of June, so I said, well, I'm still the president, so I wanted to share that particular meeting, and I did it, again, I always ask for all those county leaders, all the different local districts, to share ideas with us, because we, we need new ideas and new people, and in the fall, there will be a new meeting, of course, probably in October, and the three of us will certainly make sure we know what's going on in Atlantic County, but thank you all. Right, and especially legislative services, there's so many things in education, and it's ever-changing, I mean, just six months, you think you gotta figure it out, and something goes and changes again, so it's, it's, it's a constant thing to keep up with it, but thank you for all the hard work you've done with the county association, Lou, over the past couple of years as president, I appreciate it. It's been great, thank you. Thank you for all your support, guys, thank you.
Hey, I need a motion.
Show me.
For a journal.
Second.
I do have just a message to the board, the state of the schools is uploaded, so you can review that. Normally, this evening, the end, conclusion of the school year, I go over and review the goals and our progress on those goals, to make it easy for you, the yellow slides are the new slides, and it shows the new things that happened from February until now. Alright, so that, that shows the progress, thank you.
Motion?
Second. Aye.